Ms. Porofield, now you just sat down. Would you go on public safety or you want to have Karen on?
I can do it.
You can do it?
Sure.
Yeah, let's get going.
All right, call for order of public safety. There's three items on the agenda. The first item is expulsion detection K-9 grant.
Oh, I guess you can. Thank you. We'll be here that long.
Just want to make clear that the grant pays for the officer?
No.
Any other questions?
It said five years, but the word letter here really is only...
This has happened for three years and the dog is still active.
Is it?
So that would come out of the kidney plug then beyond the three years?
Well, yes.
Any other questions?
Was that a point double?
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And there's a ceremonial resolution for Hispanic heritage. I haven't seen his name either. Pretty much.
Yep.
So.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
And the third item on the agenda is the final review to amend Chapter 92 regarding the public safety foundation. I see racist names here. Will you be kicking that?
I'm able to if there's any questions about it or any changes that you wanted. I know the issue is to put on the agenda as a reminder that we want that public hearing in good place.
I do have a question, Ms. Porofield. My apologies. I'm sorry I didn't catch this earlier. But under membership there in 922, 22 under B, one board member selected by City Council Public Safety Chairperson, can we just get that changed to just be to have a City Council board?
That was my intent, to have the council president do that.
Because you also have it's the Public Safety Commissioner on here as well.
It's an ex officio, that's what it's called. Correct.
So is that going to be the council president or is that going to be...
Oh, yeah. They'll say ex officio.
In A, it's the ex officio.
Okay.
So you want that changed to just the City Council?
No, the City Council President would designate one of the actual board members, which could be a council member, could be a member of the public at large.
Can we just put it in the City Council then? The City Council would select the...
The City Council.
You could do it that way. It just requires it be done by resolution or by letter.
I prefer that. So the whole council has to say at least... And I guess we're getting some feedback there. What do we do with that? What's... Do we have to lower it now?
It's not up.
I know it's Mayor. I know it's Mayor.
Do you want me to turn it off?
No, how did we correct it last night?
I was told the pastor did it with yours.
We can hear.
Do you want me to turn it off?
What's her name? The girl's not upstairs.
I'm hearing the whistle and the...
She is upstairs?
The sister. Can you hear?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, it's off now.
Does everybody talk louder?
Yeah, we can hear.
So we're going to change that language to just write Public Safety Chairperson and just have City Council?
Selected by the City Council, correct? Does everybody remember that? Mr. Mayor, you're fine with that too? And then one other question. Insurance, how is this? Is this foundation covered through city insurance or when they form their not-for-profit?
They form a not-for-profit. They're on their own.
Okay.
The city is under the city's auspices and plan. They set up another not-for-profit. They have to provide their own insurance, their own court.
As long as it's under this format, then we're covered. Just as an example, let's just say you decide to do a field trip to...
Yankee Stadium.
Well, you know, the football game or basketball or whatever, Union College or whatever.
Norton.
There you go. So we'd be covered under the city insurance then, correct?
Correct.
Okay, that's... Other than that, I'm looking forward to this coming together again, looking forward. However, we can work with you and support it. Excellent opportunity for our youth and our citizens. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Mayor Porofield, for working on the town piece a while back.
Any other questions or comments? I'll second. All in favor? Aye. Anything else to come? I'm sorry?
I'm sorry. My apologies.
Yes?
No, I have my question.
Okay. If there's anything else to come before public safety, go ahead. Second, all in favor? Return.
All right, we're going to go to that board. That was where I was popping in. I just want to call the order of administrative efficiency, so the chief isn't coming up here. And I'm going to go out of order on this. We're going to discuss the towing fees that we have before us here. So I'll have Mr. Paltico at 3:00 pop on this and then if the chief needs to jump, that will do that.
Yeah, thanks, everyone here. I'm correct. But we've got Page 4 outlining what I'd like to talk to you about today. The chief and I have been working, as you know, for a long time with different tow companies in order to come up with new contracts. What we're asking you to do today is to authorize some different fees than were done a couple of years ago. And I know it's taking a while to get here, but if we can get the fees that are outlined in this agreement in front of you, that I have in writing from both HUK Towing and AC's Towing, that they will sign the agreement immediately and will finally be moving in the direction that we've been trying to get this for a while. It'd be raising the towing fee up to $160 with $35 payable to the city on top of that, so the same surcharge. And then to go to Page 6, you'll see the storage fee can go up to $65 a day for contractor, $10 for two of the cities, so $75 in total.
Go ahead.
What was the original? What was the original piece proposed?
$150. There's $35 surcharge and $30 a day for $10 for the city.
So we're raising it by $80?
No.
No. $150 is at $45.
So it's fewer than... Oh, it was $150? I thought you said $15.
$115 plus the $35 surcharge.
Okay.
So that's how you get to $150.
Okay.
So thank you fellow questions. So how is this going to be invoiced? How do we keep track of this? I think is the other portion question. When a car is towed, do they notify us? How do we know that a vehicle has been towed?
Through dispatch, all the requests are made to have a tow truck come and remove the vehicle. So that becomes the central point.
Then can we have an invoice somehow?
And all vehicles are logged, so that, again, they can be redeemed.
Okay.
Chief, want to elaborate on that?
Cover it.
Thank you, sir. Through our computer at dispatch, we set up a call sign, if you will, for each tow company. So every time we call a tow company to the scene of an accident, we have a storeful review of every time that they tow a car. So that's the way that we can break it down, whether it's on a yearly basis or a monthly basis or weekly or daily.
Time to read through all this because we didn't get it via email. But I thought we put a provision in here with regard to accidents and not applying this to accidents, but more so to snow removal issues or parking issues. I thought we said that we wanted to protect victims of accidents so that they didn't have to incur these charges after they've already been in an accident, possibly injured, you know, and all of that. Does that remain in here? Because does everybody else or people who were at the table for the original discussion, do you remember that?
I don't yet.
Yeah.
I mean, some of that's recoverable through insurance.
Same, most of it is the insurance. This reflects what they'll say is industry standards today. We've gone back and forth, and we surprised you a couple of times on this in terms of fee structure, in terms of what the contractors want, the city wants. And this is the proposal today that seems to be the most equitable. Having said that, we're really looking to do this probably into the beginning of next year and then maybe modify it based on any bumps in the road that occur this interim period.
So then follow to that. So why would this be implemented as soon as we pass this and you sign off on this, Mr. Mayor? Or are you talking January or what?
No. What we're looking to do on this is treat it as a professional service contract. So if the council approves the rate structure, I'll just enter into the contract with the vendors as a professional service contract.
And this will be very soon as well, my question is.
Probably would be next Wednesday morning.
Okay, as long as we're not talking next January.
Monday night, clerk will get it to me Tuesday, and then we can track Wednesday.
Beautiful. Very good. Ms. Porofield?
Okay, so discussing the fees again, under H4D. It's on Page 510. So should that then be changed? Are those the old vouchers still in there?
No, that's actually a concession that we negotiated where if we have a large snow event and they have to tow us a number, a large number of cars, it'll be a lower rate for those people.
Okay.
And that's actually something the chief led us came up with that it's always a good idea.
Okay, so, all right. So it's exact same amount, so I didn't know if it was just in the finer details.
Ms. ZW?
So from a logistics standpoint, are we going to send an invoice to the tow company or is the tow company going to send us a monthly check? Or, you know, how's that going to... What's the logistics on that?
You'll get Page 7. It's all laid out there. Where there are going to be certain records that we're going to get a copy of each month to see how many cars were towed, what cars were they... We're going to have our own records that come from dispatch, so we'll know when we're calling for a tow, but then they're going to have to have those same things and give them all to us.
Here?
Again, our apologies for the questions because we just got this handed to us, so hope they can bear with us. What was the other question? Oh, now, because we are changing the rates, do we need to call for a public hearing? Or because of the professional services contract, we're...
The rates are set by resolution.
So we're okay now? That changed? Okay.
That was a flush.
Any other questions so far? We're good. And we're very glad this has come on board because it's revenue that we've been missing and anticipating. So thank you very much. And Chief, thank you very much, sir. Appreciate that. And need a motion then from Ms. Karen ZW, selected by John Paul Meany on Fair C I?
Aye.
All right, thank you. And item one, adoption of New York State model sexual harassment prevention policy. And you do have a copy of this before you, and I believe they had a copy in our heat panel prior to this, I believe, correct?
I think it went out right after 5:00.
That's what I got. So this is something that New York State's record is mandating us to do. The county is doing it as well under legislation. And this is pretty much a draft of what was sent to us by New York State, so we just put our own pieces in there as needed. And again, we need to move this as a policy for City of Schenectady. Any discussion on this?
So we want to move it tonight without... I mean, we're just getting it. Want...
Well, we need to get this on Friday. We got this on Friday.
Okay, well.
Okay.
I...
It's a draft from New York State, correct, Karen? I mean, you want to talk about it real quick or...
It's New York State, but our model policy when it passed the legislation requiring the use of help, if it has it, is just off our policy, basically, both City of Schenectady and that. So if you have any questions over the week, if you go on to pass our committee, if you can answer that, if there's any changes, but standard.
All right, any questions or concerns? No. I send motion, Karen ZW and John Paul Meany on Fair C I? All right, thank you. Next move. Anything else to come before committee?
Motion to adjourn.
To adjourn, second on Fair C I? Thank you. We're adjourned. Thank you for letting us move this forward. Go ahead.
So I run open the city planning and development, and we have four items before us. And number one is the endorsement of BNI application to New York State Homes and Community Rule. I don't see Mr. Plack, and I don't know if there's any people who want to speak to this or anything else. But it's pretty...
Yeah, I'm not sure that I can hear.
I can maybe answer any questions you have.
Yeah.
This way, it's the endorsement under the board, the application doesn't guarantee us the money, but it moves it...
Closer.
One step. Closer to actually getting to the board.
So if I'm correct, it's just we're supporting the efforts going forward and we're doing... We're endorsing it. Are we doing a resolution or we're just a loose endorsement letter?
Let me just...
Just a letter of endorsement?
Resolution.
Okay.
I thought it was a resolution.
Resolution, yes.
My understanding that these are competitive grant proposals and so having a resolution, legislative body scores higher than having a letter or just having more informal endorsements.
And this is a good project. It's a great one. We should definitely endorse this.
I'll move it.
I'll second.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Next is Kristen, 2017, consolidation performance and evaluation report.
So just want to announce that the public... ...has been opened for the consolidated annual performance and evaluation report, also known as the CAPR. This report is on all the accomplishments of the projects and programs that were approved in the 2017-18 action plan for head funding for community development grants, emergency shelters grant, and homes funds. So we're going to call... We'd like to call for a public hearing to be held on Monday, September 24th at 7:00 PM in the City Council chamber, is room 209. And this would coincide with the regular schedule of council meeting. So we'd like to do that. And then also just want to highlight that there were 40 projects through 21 community organizations, seven city departments, and two outside municipalities that were part of this last year's plan to highlight two of the new programs that were underway. The craft skills training program through our Department of Action Office had 20 enrolled students. 15 completed the course, 12 found employment, and six were accepted into the carpenters pre-punish program, which was pretty successful for the first one of it. Also, the senior center, this was provides lunch and programs towards seniors. It was expected to serve 250 individuals, but it actually served 400 in the year between November and July of 2017. So that's good news. And one other thing to note is just the home buyer education program, BNI. In the last quarter, seven households purchased their first home within the city. So just want to highlight those. And if anybody wants to comment, the comment area is open, and we'll do the public hearing early in the 24th.
After minutes, can you just tell the folks who are maybe watching where they're available for them to view?
Yep. So we've got copies of this available in clerk's office, also at the Schenectady County Library, the Schenectady Municipal Housing Authority, Hamilton Hill Arts Center, and the Development Office. It's also on the City of Schenectady website.
Any other questions?
Great.
Thank you, Kristen. Thank you. So the rest of the items are going to be in executive session, your contracts and negotiations.
Motion 3 is yes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Call for order of the Finance Committee. The first item on the agenda is the standard workday by council members. This would be Mr. Moore.
Okay, this is just the...
There was a audit done by the council as well this a couple of months ago, and there were some very minor changes. I'm off in the middle of a four or five day vacation that he had allotted. And that was during the three month period. So he was able to extend to the following week, and that number had to be recalculated. With Ms. Barazo, we had calculated three months, which is my understanding of the law, but because there were four months submitted, the four months had to be counted. And like I say, it only changed the workdays by like .2 or .3 of a day. So that's what's going to go through.
Questions?
Any questions?
Make a motion?
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Next item is the budget call for a public hearing for the budget.
Good evening, Mayor, Council President of Council. We're just here announcing a call for...
...public hearing for the 2019 budget. The mayor shall be presenting the budget for the council on or before October 1st of 2018. And if we can get this through with that committee meeting and the council on the 24th, we're planning to have a public hearing on the October 9th.
Any questions?
Make a motion?
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
And I have two other items. One is just an announcement. All the council members have been contacted about possible dates for town halls. Something new we're doing for the budget this year. I'd just like to announce those since I didn't hear any objections. October 3rd would be a Wednesday. 7:00 PM, we will have one in Bellevue at St. Paul's Episcopal Church. On October 4th, the Thursday, it'll be at Steyman's Park at 7:00 PM. And October 5th, we will be having one at 5:30, a little bit earlier since it's a Friday night, at Bridge Church on Crane Street. So we hope that the public will come out and make their voices heard.
Mr. Kojer?
Yeah, and again, thank you for setting that up. And I think it's very important, something new there we're going to be doing as a council together. And again, just to hear some input and some feedback from our citizens who normally cannot or do not come to our council meetings here or at City Hall. We're actually going to be going out, as Mr. Paul Meany said, we're going to be going out to those particular neighborhoods. And again, any city resident or folks who are concerned about the mayor's budget again, which hopefully will be presented on the first or before, to get some feedback and to get some information to our council members, so that we will then come back to our work sessions the following week, I believe we have some of those scheduled. So as a council, we kind of know what the priorities are or concerns that our residents might have, similar to what the community development block grant does as well. I think you had three or four sessions or even two, at least that I went to, the two of them. But again, just to get some feedback and how to prioritize and what direction they were looking at. And I think that's kind of what we're doing as a council as well. And I look forward to attending all three of those sessions.
Anybody else have anything to say?
Okay. And the next item is also somewhat related to the budget. With the progress on the A, B, and C diamonds, you know, I've had a chance to go watch a number of games or practices on the fields. And, you know, I know you're busy, you've got a gazillion things going on, you're pulling them in a lot of different directions, so you probably don't know all of what's going on, nor should you. But there's a lot of issues with the fields as far as supervision, that what can we do as a council to assist maybe in the budget process with that? For example, teams have been doing soft toss on the A Diamond, B Diamond, C Diamond, especially B and C, it's been bending the fence. I noticed that on the A Diamond, there's a number of issues with cleanliness, with seeds and different things. And is that something we can get a sweeper or something included? I don't know if that would help. But what can we do to assist you? Because you're in a gazillion different...
We're putting the budget together, so a long time, there was nothing there. Now we're getting higher utilization, so it becomes staffing issue, maintenance issue, and then trying to match it up with what the projected revenues off both A Diamond and the adjacent fields are going to be, so that I'd like it to be revenue neutral in terms of its impact on the bottom line of budget. And I'll have recommendations for the council while I submit it, which will probably be on Monday, October 1st.
That'd be great because, I mean, we have, as you know, we have a premier facility in the Northeast, and teams are just begging to play there, and it's an investment that we want to maintain. So we look forward to that. Anything else? Motion 2 is here. Second, all in favor?
Aye. Called our preparations to order, and we just have one item, and that's a ceremonial resolution for Coco House, which is a youth center in Hamilton Hill, which is under the auspices of New York. We're going to be celebrating their 10th anniversary.
For motion, if we have any questions. Who's by Ms. Porofield? Is that by Mr. Reiki?
Yes?
Sure. All of us in favor? Thank you. Is there anything else to come before our preparations?
Motion to adjourn.
Second, by Mr. Ricky, and by Ms. Borfield, we are adjourned. All of the favors say aye, there you go.
I want to reconvene, city development and planning, so that we entertain a motion to go into executive session. Motion to go into executive session.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Sorry, anger, do you want?
We're selling property and it's negotiations, contract discussion, there's financial, personal financial information that will be discussed.
We're just trying to hide it, can you see that?
Got to do my job.
Doing a fun job. Have a good evening.
Thank you, everybody, bye-bye.